All right, we're recording.
Ready? All right. Good evening, everyone. It is now six oh four P M. September eleven twenty twenty five. We will call the Albany Planning Board hearing and meeting to order. Very short agenda today as appropriate. Joined by Rachel Broxter, Melissa Del Yard. I am Chair Chris Ellis. We have our staff with us. And we'll get through these two agenda items. Hopefully without too much issue. First up will be part of our meeting agenda for seventy and one oh eight through one fourteen Grand Street, Community Builders, Conditional Use Permit, Development Plan Review. There's a way for street amenities as well. Are they trying to present on this?
No, they're not. They are. This should be on.
Do we have, do we have any additional questions on this project?
No, I don't, I do not.
Rachel. There are no, if you didn't have any additional review, we can go ahead and advance this one. My questions are outside of the scope. Planning Board purview, but it's still in there. It's more social commentary. But that being said, all in favor of advancing an improvement, conditional use permit, the waiver for street amenities and develop a plan review for seventy and one oh eight through one fourteen Grand Street. Is there a motion?
Solved.
In a second?
Second.
Moved in seconded. Assuming no questions, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, passes. One to our hearing agenda. We have an amendment to a prior project that at least I know Melissa and I were being deep in for quite some time. Over at one oh five Broadway, applicants first Columbia. I see Mr. Hirschberg is here representing. This is an amendment to approve development plan, review and design of review of a tall building. This is a proposal to amend D P R number zero zero five four for new E R T B number zero zero oh two, which includes new construction of a nine story building, a general office and restaurant. The ground floor with a footprint of eleven thousand eight hundred square feet, growth area of four hundred two thousand one hundred thirty six square feet, proposal also include new construction of a four story mixed use building with fifty six dwelling units and four thousand square feet growth. Ground floor general use retail. Project includes off street parking above seventy six spaces. So here's going to the floor shores.
Thank you. Behind me is Chris Betty, who represents First Columbia LLC. And Melissa L, who represents about this project, because she is the person involved with the hotel directly behind this project. Melissa's been involved in this project since just about its beginning. Chris was involved in the very beginning. It used to be a brownfield. They cleaned up the brownfield originally and that was all taken care of. This shows the site. The, the big red star is in an area that's, that's fully graded in compassionate material that was put in when, when the material was backfilled under the brownfield agreement. And that it's great material to build upon, but meanwhile for our building foundation, we have to go down the, because we have a tall building and the soil, but all of that isn't very good. We use a end bearing pile, so it's go all the way down to the rock. So that's how it's going to be supported. So what's in between us and the, and the rock is, is relevant important. Okay. Question came up as a question of do we have to redo a geotechnical report? The basic information of your technical report hasn't changed because the distance to the rock did move at all in the fifteen years we've been involved with this project. Next, we've got a, this is the existing edition plan. At the, at the bottom is the, is the hotel. The rest of it is, doesn't show much on it because there's not much on it right now. And the next one shows, this goes through the history of the sealer starting in two thousand eighteen and bringing it to date. It's been through a, a lot of reviews in the past as we went through original approval. And we went, had amended approval when, when the hotel was brought on. So a lot of the analysis normally done for a project are really always been done. Like sewer and water use, sewer and water use proposing here is less than we proposed. But in the project originally received its approvals. So we don't think that's an issue. And like I said, the geotechnical hasn't changed and the, the site hasn't changed. I guess, I guess the real question is, are the buildings we've supposed to put on there satisfactory according to code? So if you want to go through this, next one has a comparative analysis of, I'm still in this for man, Anna prepared this for us. It shows, it shows the approval in two thousand eighteen at a hundred and eighty one residential units were now down to fifty six. Hotel rooms were originally a hundred and thirty six, there's a hundred and ten existing. The square foot of retail was originally over twenty four thousand, it's down to four thousand. But what went up is the office space. So we traded residential units for office space and commercial retail space for office space. And the parking is actually, service parking is a little more than it was when we revised the plan in two thousand nineteen for the hotel. And like I said, the water use is actually less than we had before. So the comparative analysis is pretty good. If you go to the next slide, this shows us fill in the building. The building in front, Port Pearl of the Broadway, is a nine story office building. It has a restaurant on the south end. The, there also is a plaza in between the nine story office building and a four story residential building. Four story residential building also has a plaza adjoining Spencer, Spencer Street and Broadway. The, the area there shows a surface parking and if you, there's also a traffic light currently under construction on the site. So the question was, do we need a traffic light? Well, the city is already putting a traffic light in, so I assume that's, that is, question's been answered. The next, the next slide shows the water service, which has a couple of water services going out just outside the curb on Broadway. And it's active service goes to a manhole at the back of the site, which goes to a sewer in Spencer Street. So, you know, it's fairly simple serve. We don't have to cross Broadway. Project crossing Broadway, we had that once before when we down to seven sixty Broadway, that project was a major crossing. We had to go across the Agamal conduits, which is a whole bank of conduits, was all the way from Albany to Waterbury. And it, it was fortunate to get through there because National Guard had separation requirement. We ended up putting a water main about sixteen foot deep to get across it, but we did get across it. But the problem, we don't have to go in that direction. So the stormwater plan, the stormwater plan was actually done originally. Everything was sized to take the entire build out of the area, even though it was like a phase one was a hotel. And it was thought that the phase two would be residential units here. And we went through a couple of iterations with potential developers. It never panned out. And now First Columbia LLC believes that there's a market for the nine story office building. And the residences, they think will be, will receive. Landscaping plan, we've got a lot of comments back on landscaping plan. We'll address those. And the, the first line of comments we got back from apartments have a lot of comments about landscaping. And we'll address those. There are some problems with putting landscaping out by the curb on Broadway because they have all, a lot of utilities out there. But we, we can't fit a few in there and we'll, we'll work with the, with the staff to figure out the best place to get landscaping in on the site. Next one is the rendered view of the front elevation of mixed use building. And the height of the building from the, from the ground elevation is elevation thirty two plus or minus. And at peak of that roof is like one, one fifty seven, so it's like a hundred and twenty five. We called it a hundred and thirty on the tall building application because we're never sure whether or not some change will take place, which might require us to add a foot or two panel conduits or something under there or other things fit into the floors depending upon the tenant's needs. The next, next one shows that, this is the first floor plan. It's a little light, I'm sorry. But on a, on the right hand side, and that's the east end of the building is where the restaurant is. And the rest of it is entrances for services and entrances primarily for the building. And the next floor, the next floor has the typical floor of the buildings are pretty much, there are a series of seven of these and then there's a penthouse floor. The only one difference is the penthouse floor. And that has the offices all around it. This is the penthouse floor. Which gives you a great view from there, I'm sure. You'll definitely be able to see the mountains in Massachusetts, but you probably can't from the seventh or eighth floor too. The next one, this is an elevation which is required to show you what it is. That bottom elevation, the ground is one thirty two. The peak of the building shows as, no, it's thirty two. The peak of the building shows as one fifty seven. So it's pretty close to the hundred thirty. It's like a hundred and twenty four showing on there, but we made the tall building application assuming that we can agree with it just in case. I don't know if there's a change been made between the time we go through with our concept or actually. The next one is the side elevation of the building. Looks pretty much the same for both sides. There are entrances on both sides, one, one going out to Spencer Street and one going to the restaurant. And the next one is the rear elevation. That's coming in from the parking lot. It's also looking to the rear of the hotel. That's the building we have. There's some radiuses in the back, which we have to get some loading area. Have you got some entrances area down there? So there's a not a, a correct straight grade all the way across the bottom of the building. The next one is the rendered view of a mixed use building. It's a four story building. And that's, that's what it proposes a little by looking in. This is looking in from Spencer Street. And I think I have a view looking in from Broadway. Next. That's supposed to, if you go back, that's looking in from Broadway. That's the, the building there. And you'll see it shows park, there's parking beneath that building there. So that, boy, no. Hit me out with a head.
Retail on this end.
What's that?
Retail on this end and parking on there.
Yeah. What you're saying is the retail end there, that has all the glass on as required by code and transparency of the, of the, of the commercial space. And this is the view of the front and rear elevations of the mixed use building. And those are the two side elevations. And here's the floor plan, once of the first floor, which has the green space, which is commercial space. And the rest are the upper floors, which are residential uses. Well, a question made about whether or not we have a need, we do have to put some other things in there. We have to show bike storage and wheel mount bike storage internal of that building. This is the first pass at the floor plan, so be able to satisfy that demand.
Any questions from board?
Do you have any?
I do, just so you know, so we'll fill them out.
Well, the first question that just comes to mind is really out of curiosity, do you have any thoughts or plans as to what in the retail space?
Well, we showed, we showed the restaurant. The other retail space, we're not sure. Retail market is, is a, is a tough thing to predict, especially when we're, even if we get approved right now, we're still a couple of years away from having that retail space for rent, that who knows what might come along? It'd be a great location for somebody that's writing a restaurant in a rental building, a lot of foot traffic in there. But, you know, we're not sure who will jump up to buy rent. But I don't think personally it has any retail tenants in mind yet.
Do you have any retail plans in mind?
We do not. So it's going to be complimentary to the, to the whole mixed use area, you know, including the hotel. Yeah, a lot of options, a lot of things that support the apartments. You know, potentially even some more food options, some sort of coffee shop. Find enough foot traffic to make that work.
One thing that I just went on downtown, just noticed is it feels like there's not a lot of grocery stores available. So it feels like there could potentially be an opportunity there. I've seen them to the building, you know, like I'm just looking at pictures. But something that I feel like when I'm downtown that I'm not able to easily get is groceries.
The, because of, of getting grocery shopping in downtown areas all along. And every Missacotta has tried it. Some of the better results than other. It's connected. They're actually totally subsidizing. Like, like it's totally subsidizing the cost of a, of a, of a, relative to the co-op there is going to put a restaurant downtown. Even they don't know if it's going to work because primarily a, a lot of the shopping is, I think people go into the major shopping places. And the amount of shopping they would do at this place would probably minimal. And therefore the prices would be higher. So I'm not so sure how it'll work, but they're going to make an attempt at doing it. We, we had an attempt in the South Albany area, which has been going, but so. Again, I'm, I'm not so sure whether a small grocer might be in there. So I got my ear, who knows? Could be stranger things could happen.
I think it's kind of cool for us to see that this space will have something. From all of the, I don't even want to say trauma, but the circumstances that surrounded the project, what was it, two thousand eighteen when I look back to? Okay, so that's seven years ago. And there was COVID in between. And that was one of those, I think I was fairly reduced before, but it was one of those projects that was like really big, really exciting for downtown to just see it shift and shape. I guess you need to pay attention to the environment and what can happen with any sort of big deal. I don't think the board has approved a ton of projects that have just totally fizzed out. The one we probably think about the most right now is that one on West.
Western Avenue.
Sitting next to, to Sutie. Give us the story. What, what has changed over time that now makes this, that can make this work? I was curious as to how we shifted from what was largely a residential program with some commercial to wholly, almost wholly office. It's a lot of office. Where with any of us, I've worked downtown. I've always worked downtown. When I walk around downtown, this is a ghost town. And there's a ton of office space. So to bring another hundred thousand square feet of office space downtown is counterintuitive. So I'm asking you to tell me the story of what you all are seeing that makes this thing.
Class A, first of all, this would be the new, the first class A office building built in downtown office since six seventy seven Broadway. Again, there, there hasn't been action downtown to do new class A office space. And when I say class A is a class A office space, an awful lot of demands are made by people that'd be very expensive to take the building and rehab it to what they need. So I believe, and I don't want to speak for First Columbia LLC, well firstly, it's here.
They can speak up too.
I'm with Dan, he's doing good.
That, that they obviously have a tenant in mind for a portion of this nine story building. Because they wouldn't go nine stories unless they had somebody in mind. They're, they're not willing to reveal yet. They don't, you know, not, they're not really at that point. But the tenant would be a good tenant and their only option to find the kind of space they want, move out to the Towne Colony. It really has some relatively new office buildings that have become available. But you can't, it's hard to take all the working with ninety stage two, was it going the other way, turning their offices into apartments? Because it's clear that those, the layout of the floors where the apartments are going would not be suitable for, for a modern office layout. People have different ideas on how to lay out offices. You saw the office they had the typical floors. They have offices around the side, big open space in the middle. And again, it's a different type of layout that you get in any of the existing buildings you go to rehab. And you can't really take down a lot of those internal walls. They're bearing walls. I, you know, I've been through a lot of rehabs. Primarily the rehabs are going, taking office goes, primarily residential. Because you don't need much long span to build residency units into it. You could build it into the same sort of space you used to have in your, in your offices. But, so I think the, the, the problem here, the reason this is coming about is there's a need for class A office at downtown Albany. We want to keep tenants here that would flee the city if they don't get, if they can't get change here. So that's the main, main reason that this is, it's very heavy into office.
Mister Chairman, I would just, Dan was right on the head there of the mail with his statements. Exactly. We, we looked in downtown. So there's a, there's a, there's a handful of tenants that are good size looking for office space in the capital district. We initially went to try to find some buildings that we could own downtown, that existing buildings. You know, a little bit of trouble finding willing sellers, surprisingly. Or sellers with the right price. But Dan's exactly right. The rehab cost of an existing building and the timeframe it takes to rehab an existing building is almost identical to building a new building. And our thoughts were, you know, we were involved with this piece of property with Melissa many, many years ago. You know, it's the gateway to the city. It's underdeveloped. It needs to be developed. And it's going to be the modern office building, you know, so you're not trying to make an old building new. You're going to be building right for what the tenants want. And the perimeter offices, you know, for years, everybody was, you know, putting the cubicles along the windows and moving everybody to the inside. That's actually going backwards. And now they want perimeter offices every, you know, that's your, you know, the people making the money are, you know, in the fancy offices and the support groups in the middle. That's kind of the way that the market seems to be going back. So, you know, you say, I don't, we looked, there's not a lot of vacancy in large footprint space in Albany. I mean, you can find it here and here and here, but you can't put enough together to support some of these tenants that were looking for space. So, you know, it just kind of morphed into, you know, for us, if we can't find what we need to do downtown easily, the new build, it actually works back, right? We can do something nice. We can do something that's kind of, you know, at the gateway. That actually, actually changes the dynamic of what's going on. And especially since all this stuff seems to be moving up Broadway to the warehouse district as well. So I think it's, it was kind of right for us to say, let's just go new and give the tenants what they want. The other advantage of this site is the quadruped square parking garage. I mean, that's a huge advantage. Parking is very close and there's plenty of. So it's convenient to the employees and I think it's good use, you know. Good for the office, good for the apartments. It's obviously working for the hotel, so. In other plus, you know, other places in town is hard to find parking close by.
So my memory serves me, we have the old, I think it used to be a train station, Seth Two Headquarters, now it's a Redbird property that they're developing all the two housing Franklin.
Five seventy five Broadway.
Yeah. Then we go next door to six seven seven.
That's fine, yeah.
Did you have the, the exit? The Old English Club and the conference place.
Simply for forty five Broadway, I've been involved when I'm doing a sewer and water reports and stuff like that. It's like fifty three residential units, sixty, total sixty six bedrooms. It's not a huge residential space. And that's because we're having that very beautiful open space into residential spaces is difficult. As a matter of fact, what they did is they concentrated most of the residential, residential space on one half of the building, where they're adding floors and then some of that high vaulted area. And the rest of it, the major use of the rest of that building is to be for a data center. Fourteen thousand square feet of that building to be a data center, which is going to have free employees. So their parking demands are not huge there.
I, I wasn't suggesting it was, I'm just thinking about, you know, the direction this, the, that this happens is going. That way. Be good to see some things coming. When I think about the intersection of State and Pearl and that stuff around there, we got that old Citizens Bank building. That was the, the humongous Mother Strasse across the street that was the Rite Aid. The big Bank of America building that I swear not a single soul was in. The one across the mid, we got Chats, which we heard was happening. We're, we're talking, we're in their world now, planning world. And just, I think all of us, especially, I think speaking for me and Melissa, that we've been sitting here at this table for quite some time to be able to see the manifestation of Albany twenty thirty and what's supposed to happen there.
Right.
You know, what the, the various projects, we've seen a zillion projects from, from you over the years. And just hoping that somehow we turn the corner and that downtown can actually be a downtown worth bragging about versus.
Yeah.
Five block.
About ten years ago, a gentleman came in to go. About ten years ago, a gentleman came in to build very large apartment project on Second Avenue, you may remember it. It it had no possibility.
Oh, I I know what you're talking about, um.
No, nobody do a financial study of that that shows it being feasible, of course, the building was high. But they got a whole bunch of properties, the grade difference down from Second Avenue, whole bunch of things that went on there, and he had proposed a a very upscale elaborate building down there, and they they could have got a financial factor, that was a problem with it. It was a beautiful plan, but it, now maybe if it came came about today and we took two hundred million dollars of of the governor's money, you could put some of that into it, but I, you know, at the time, new development, sort of south of Madison Avenue, it was tough to get any substantial new development down there.
I didn't go down that far, I said State Pearl, okay? I I I understand the challenges of of the south end, but, you know, downtown in terms of not even commercial convergence to residential, which I know is difficult because the the plumbing is different, the elevator banks are different, all of the, the floor plates are so very different than uh, than stuff like that, I worked on that project when I was, you know, pushing legislation for New York City. So I understand that, um, I think just in terms of vibrancy in downtown in any way, shape or form at that intersection is probably, you know, two to four hundred yards in any direction, it's just not what it was even when I first moved here twenty something years ago, so. Just hoping that one of these days it's cool, but this, this is, this is pretty cool.
I think Redburn's done, you know, quite a bit of good, the North Pearl corridor, so you say, you know, normally around at five o'clock. I was driving through uh, Sunday morning, and because of all that residential on North Pearl, there was quite a few people walking around. And it was really ten o'clock in the morning, and I was like, this is a lot different than it was fifteen years ago, that's for sure. So I think Redburn, but you're right, I don't think, you know, that conversion has come to State Street to get that living component over there yet. I don't know what every project that's happening, but they're tough, the the conversions are tough to do, and you gotta, you know, the rents then have to be fairly high, so.
Are you guys seeing a a return to office movement in any shape shape?
Yes, 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 they're the the class A office space in the whole Capital District, you know, there, so there was always, you know, since COVID, there's been a flight to quality. So, you know, your B's and your C products, you know, because of the vacancies in the A, folks were downsizing, moving to A space and paying relatively the same amount that they were paying in their B and C spaces, they've taken less space and that type of thing. So there's been, so the A space in the in the suburbs is is pretty well leased, I think, there's not a lot of vacancy. You know, it's now a point where the B's and the C's have to kind of, you know, step up and upgrade. Yeah, so that, but there is, there are tenants, I told you, there's, there was a few tenants when we started this project, you know, talking to us about large space needs, and it it was surprising, but they they were, they're out there.
Cool, and if I can just jump in on one thing, the A space, I mean, remember, people, these companies are desperate to get the employees back in the office, and so they really are.
It wasn't A space that.
They're enticing them, they have, that's and and that's happening, that's happening across the state, it's happening across the country. I mean, that is, in the office markets, that's what's happening. The the A, A, class A buildings, that's not where the issues are.
Understood. Any other questions? Staff, do you have anything else to say?
Yeah, 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 we can go through them pretty quickly. Um, mostly it was to have the first comparison, if there were additional questions about the previous twenty eighteen approval and then the twenty nineteen approval, which this current amendment is going on, so it's kind of a.
I have one question aside, um, so either there's, this bike label will utilize the, I think it's in the Quackenbush Square, but also the parking lot, seventy six spaces, will any of those be wired for electric or?
Yes, yes, it will be, you know, not a tremendous amount, but it will be a few stations.
And and what we're personally doing, and we request, First County LLC, was to put some conduits in residential spaces, so they don't have to rip it up to do it. So we, you know, if they have two or three uh, fully outfitted, we probably would recommend that they have a loose that A or expansion and put in the conduits anyway, because I'm, putting a conduit in the ground is probably inexpensive.
I do wanna, and go back to before all our time, uh, the first project on this site that originally started was the, was the driver of the Brownfield cleanup, was the Amos project, right, which was very sizable, huge office building, um, had residential units, I mean, so quite a bit bigger than anything that's proposed today or was proposed in twenty eighteen.
And even our initial proposals, which are, you know, we we took it over in twenty fifteen. The first approved project was twenty eighteen, but we were in front of this board with a project earlier than that that had a ton of office, it truly was more mixed use, it was office mixed use and hotel. Um, so the, and we talked to a ton of, you know, the office thing kept coming and going, coming and going, but you know, in development, it's, if the deal's there, the deal's there, if it's not there, it's not there, no one's building a speculative office for it. That's just not, that's not gonna happen.
I don't know, go back, I think it's the same people that Dan used. Um, so just again pointing out that the water usage is anticipated to be lower because of that change from residential to office. Um, and the number of surface parking spaces isn't um, too much of a difference from the twenty nineteen approval. Um, and as we mentioned, the parking garage is expected to be used as well. Um, we referred the project to Albany County Planning Board, and they had some core measures backed back in August. Um, we were trying to attend those for some.
I had projects on the eight eleven meeting, they canceled that, they set it up for eight.
Twenty five.
Four twenty five, and they canceled that one too, so.
Yeah, so technically, we're no longer required to have the recommendations in writing, because it'll be past the thirty days. So just to state that for the record, um, and for Seeker, um, the project, we're considering it still following under the previous negative declaration which was adopted in twenty eighteen, along with the part two and part three of the full environmental assessment form. Um, there's no significant change in the original twenty eighteen FAF, or there was also an additional Seeker technical memorandum in twenty nineteen. Um, the demolition of previous structures, excavation and construction have all already been completed, as noted. Read out some sentences to state for the record, that the City of Albany Planning Board, as lead agency, previously issued a negative declaration in twenty eighteen which was reaffirmed through tech memo in twenty nineteen. And this twenty twenty five amendment is a reduced intensity of project with fewer residential units, lower trip generation, and substantially lower water and sewer demand. Dislikes already been remedied under the Brownfield cleanup program, and stormwater sewer improvements provided bad benefits. None areas of disturbance or environmental concerns are introduced with the proposal. And staff concludes that the amendment does not result in any new or different significant adverse environmental impacts. As I mentioned, the fire night deck remains valid, and no supplemental seeker review is warranted. So that was, that's for the record. Which I think goes far into depth with Seeker, we can certainly talk about it if there's any questions, but I think we can move on to the next slide. As Dan mentioned, the D E C certificate of completion for that Brownfield renovation, we do have that in the project file as well. Um, and the only other thing I think we haven't touched on from this slide is that there's a reduced bulk relative to the original twenty eighteen approval. Just because of the the massing of the building, um, so even if it's a little bit higher, the shadow in fact should be about to be limited in conjunction with the fire findings, and the shadow is related to the design review of twelve buildings application. Um, so all uses are permitted, obviously, in the M U D T. We're going off of the original approvals, so the number of four volt units required is reduced than it would be for a brand new project coming into twenty twenty five. So that would only be three units, but it does still require the, you know, percentage of interrupt or passive or active recreation as well as the on-site laundry, so. Like Dan mentioned, those full tanks will be revised just by that detail at some point. Um, all the setbacks are met, as well as the indoor disc coverage, it's in the downtown, so a hundred percent is allowed. From the original approval, um, we have a replacement of the sidewalks like we needed, either a Long Rock or Spencer. Um, and there was originally an internal kind of sidewalk pedestrian pathway that connected from the hotel kind of along Quackenbush Square up to the office, kind of around the parking lot, so that's been requested to be in there as well. Because we're anticipating that the office building would be kind of the first initial plan, not saying phase, but that that would be kind of the priority. Um, we're just requesting confirmation of whether there would be any subdivision for those partials related to financing, so we can talk about that later. Um, and then relative to the shared parking agreement, if there was an executive agreement with Albany, we'll just get a copy of that. Like Dan mentioned, bike grab will look for that, snow storage, just kind of typical code compliance stuff. Um, as Dan also mentioned, the landscaping along the Quackenbush side where the restaurant is proposed, we would just be looking for something basically equivalent to what was approved previously, so just a little bit more robust there. Um, there previously weren't street trees required along Broadway, I think because of the issues with utility, um, so just along Spencer Street should be acceptable. Um, and there's just a few more kind of details needed, which I don't think was well beginning. We did get preliminary engineering comments um, this week, but otherwise we'll be waiting for the official comments from other departments. So, because we're, you know, looking still for a few more edits and comments from all the other departments. Um, we're not currently recommending action at this meeting, um, but we would expect probably a pretty quick turnaround for the October meeting.
We we'd like to get all those comments addressed, certainly be able to get this done, hopefully for the October meeting. A lot of comments, but I point out that a lot of them are repetitious, so, you know, they're things that we already knew about that, you know, we had to add. The one, the one thing that's giving us a little problem is the pedestrian route through the back going, going out towards Montgomery Street. If it, if it's at all, it's gonna be convoluted somewhat by the great differences in between the the front area there. I don't think we'd have a handicap accessible route through there, because we gotta, and we have that narrow area between the plaza and the front from there.
Yeah.
There's a great difference in there that would make it very difficult to do anything with regard to handicap accessibility, so. But, you know, we'll work on trying to satisfy, I know, I know Brad originally said, it's Brad's rule, I can draw a blue line on a plan, so he wants to see it. We'll try to satisfy that, if that's the right ability.
Yeah, I mean, if the alternative location or spacing of it is easier, um, I think we can probably work that through. And even just the pedestrian connection, you know, from Spencer Street, um. Yeah, I think that's the thing to talk about.
Um, off the beaten path question, one of one slide talked about the removal of hazardous soil? Or can you go back to that one for Brownfield? Yeah, the Brownfield.
Yeah, Brownfield is all cleaned up by the, I think they explained that.
I understand.
And.
But there was a third, third to last, it was a, it's just a word. What happens, have you all, it was contaminated, that's what it was.
Contaminated soil.
Is there a difference between contaminated and hazardous?
No, they're somewhat interchangeable, hazardous waste is things that have actual classification to it. Contaminated soil is another term, but I, you know, formerly everybody looks at hazardous, hazardous waste and hazardous material. Great amount of removal was done on the site, and then issue of, issue of completion was issued on it, so.
Absolutely, but I I said this is off the beaten path, this is not a, I'm asking about definitions. In terms of the the soil, where do we put it?
There there are, there are places that make their money by accepting.
Auburn, New York.
Auburn, New York, okay. Is that hazardous?
Let's go to Auburn, big one.
Yeah, that's where a lot of that, that's where a lot of the contaminated soil goes, but on City of Albany landfill takes that.
There are, it depends what what the contaminants are and which, where we can bring it.
Yeah.
That's why I asked about the definition of contaminated, I didn't know if that was a generic term being used in the predication versus the term part of contaminated versus hazardous. And I know that the state of Michigan just pretty much issued a declaration that New York can no longer take hazardous materials from Brownfield cleanup to uh.
Michigan, yeah.
So I didn't, that's what I'm asking.
Well, as uh, as we just said, Melissa just said that the quality of the material, you know, we're, I hate to tell you the cost, but doing all the chemical tests that had to be done on that soil for every contaminated known known man, and whatever was there had to be mitigated, and there were different requirements of mitigating different, different things, that's, that's it.
Cleaned up to attract one cleanup, so it's the cleanup. Small portion that couldn't be cleaned, but for the most part, the whole site is.
What was, what caused the contamination?
There was a gas station, there was a gas station right there in front of the uh.
Gas station, dry cleaners, there were multiple, multiple.
Oh, wow.
I mean, this was the oldest part of all of these, so it went.
Pre-green, pre-green work, frankly.
Yeah.
There was a weather maker shop there in seventeen eighty, and the contamination was still there from that.
There was a, there was a long list of, a long list of offenders, um.
You gotta get, get them back there and pay for that removal.
But so there, there's a little track four that's next to the historic buildings, because we couldn't disturb it. So then that's all have, so that it's um, can't be disturbed. But that's mostly on the hotel side, there's a tiny little thing where they go somewhere.
The details, alright, is there any other business? And uh, we can, is there motion to adjourn?
Some moved.
Second.
Seeing those adjustments were adjourned at six fifty one.
I get to see the Mets game.
Yay.